...agreement with Blackburn, Hough, Happy Will. As everybody knows, we all had a meeting here and uh.
That this is the old one.
This is the old one, so.
So should we table it?
We should.
That's what.
No, we shouldn't. I don't think we should. Here, take a look at this.
Yes, we're aware of this.
Yeah, I know if you were aware of it, then we've already set a precedent by giving a mop to companies that did not.
This is American Light Metal LLC that we gave.
Yeah, but it's DVA Empire Diecasting.
I'm just saying.
So you have exactly the same situation. In fact, they didn't even get any new men and Tori Blackburn's gonna be hiring.
Let me just say this. This was a bankruptcy situation. We were, this was brought to us that this new company was acquiring this particular facility and this company was going to basically decide from a, they're an international company, whether they want to stay, keep this facility or just go to South Carolina where they have another facility. And we decided we would do this, but this is not the same situation.
It's job retention. We did the same thing for Patty Onoplosia.
Well, that's a different story.
Don't leave town. No, it's not. There's still retention of businesses that did not add any new employees. They kept the same number of employees and they were going to leave town and we retained them by giving them a mop. We've set a precedent twice before.
Well, I'm telling you that uh.
If we don't do this for Tori Blackburn, that's almost like discriminating, discriminating against him. Whereas we didn't discriminate against Empire Die and Patty Onoplosia.
This is not the same thing. This is not the same company. This is a new company.
DVA.
Doesn't matter. This is the way it was presented as a new company.
No, it wasn't.
Well, from your standpoint, we agreed to do this because a new company acquired this.
If it's new businesses, Empire Die Casting, it's not a new company.
Well, we, who did we, who did we sign the mop agreement with? It was with this other company. That's who we signed it with, not with Empire Die. That's the truth.
Well, it's not right.
It is in fact the case that we, it was this American Light Metals LLC was the one.
The ordinance says to reach this.
Detroit on the ordinance.
I understand that.
The ownership is different.
The ownership is different. That's all I'm saying.
The ownership is different, but the employees are the same. I mean.
This is not the same case. That's all I'm saying.
It's, it's job retention. That's the point. Job retention is just as important as bringing new companies in. And job retention, not giving somebody job retention when we've given it to other people is not fair.
Okay, all right. Even Joe Deemer agreed that the way the mop was written, this particular ordinance twenty eight two thousand fifteen, at the meeting, he agreed it was not in compliance. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but then you asked for legislation that was passed for his, I have the floor. You asked for the legislation that was passed, all right? All the ordinances were given to you. Out of all the ordinances that were passed, only one is active. Now, some of these companies got their mops, never even came to town. Some of them got the mops, never qualified. There's all kinds of different things, reasons, but we only have one mop that's active today, just one. So.
You're, we, I asked you for, for how the, what the procedure was to ask these people if they're in compliance. And I think you can tell me what that is. You say there's only one active. We've only had one of the companies have their submission approved? Or what has the situation been? Because there are a number of mops outstanding.
Only one, there's a number of mops out there with only one active. Only one do we send a check to.
Well, I get that. What I was asking was something else. Do we have a process where annually, since it's still basically from twenty eleven forward, we still have a number of them, they're outstanding. Do we ask them every year if they're compliant? Do they have to submit something?
They have to submit.
Okay. And what you're saying is the people who received a mop have not submitted paperwork or have been rejected. That's what I'm asking.
One was rejected over the years that I'm aware.
But the other ones have not basically submitted paperwork asking for their taxes to be returned to them.
There were times where we told them, you do not qualify, you haven't done what you were supposed to do to qualify. And then after that, we never got another application.
So all of the companies that we, that currently have an outstanding mop have at least submitted once and we adjudicated whether they met them or not. Is that, and then, so there's only one company left, which I think is the.
There's only one more paying.
Right, well.
There's a difference. You're right. There are a lot of mops out there.
Yes.
Not a lot.
There are quite a few, yes.
Well, how many, I emailed that list out.
Yes, I know. I went through the list. And I eliminated them before twenty eleven because it looks like they would have expired. You know, even if, you know, it was a little bit of time, the mop would have expired. So I went from twenty eleven forward, you know, looked at the list. And all I'm asking you is if the list has been gone through and every one of them has been rejected or they failed to submit.
I didn't look if they were rejected. I simply gave you the list of active, active paid mops.
Okay, so.
And here's the other list you asked for. As far as the best we can tell, and that took a lot of work to go through, to find out which companies are empty.
The buildings are empty, right.
Out of all these businesses, I would say this is about ninety percent accurate because businesses come and go all the time.
Okay.
Sure. But as long as I get that.
No, I'm on.
What's the percentage?
Well, I tell you what.
Very, very low. Here, if you want, you can look through this while we're talking about stuff, but the Xs are the ones that are.
Can we get a copy for all of us?
I could probably do that. I can give one to Josephine maybe and she'll get and send it. See, the thing is, it was so thick.
Right, well, you can scan it, right?
I can.
So the X are, the X are vacant?
Oh, no, I can't. The biggest scanner upstairs is not a service.
Oh, okay.
And I can do it here in a bit's time soon.
I see.
But I, I can't.
I can do this within, oh, two minutes.
I think Quikbrother's Sedo could uncount because I don't think buildings are anything.
Well, that's true.
I didn't even notice.
You didn't notice the building wasn't there?
No, I don't think I meant that. I think I meant, I didn't notice it was written down.
Everybody let's go through it.
Anyway, I'll tell you what. I will scan this into my scanner tonight. I get home, it's taking two minutes. And we can, we can just use it. Everybody will get a copy.
But by next week, it might not be valid.
Well, but the idea was.
It's a snapshot within the last week.
Yeah. And, and, you know, people can leave. Like Sears has left. I just imagine those are, that building had lost Sears.
Looks like that.
Yeah, well, it is, you know, they were, still, okay.
But I still feel that on ordinance number twenty eight dash two thousand fifteen, that this is a good way to retain business. And we have done this before for two other companies. Now, if you want, Terry will change the name, Tori will change the name. Big deal. That, well, you're making an issue. They changed the name.
If they want to sell to another company because they're in bankruptcy, then it would be a good one.
Well, Patty O was in bankrupt.
Done.
Well, yeah, right, but they got a mop.
I, I personally think we should table ordinance number twenty eight two thousand fifteen because Joe Deemer has provided another ordinance, forty eight two thousand fifteen, to replace twenty eight two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, but he would be getting a mop on five people.
That's because that's what the rules are.
Well, that's not what the rules, let's put it this way. If you want it to be about rules and not about the thing that funds our city. Our city's funded by our businesses. And when I look for ways to help, not just find little tiny rules that I can say, well, we can't do anything for you. Don't forget, this business wants to get rid of that junkyard. That in itself was an incentive for me to do something, to help them. And if we don't do something and then we lose that company, then what?
Well, Don, the committee, yourself and the council and Joe Deemer worked a long time the other night to fix the mop and to bring a new mop that you suggested, which we were all in agreement with, and I think we need to move on from it.
No, because that's not correct. Because the other night, I was not aware that two companies had been given mops and they didn't come in here as new companies. We did it to retain. I found that out after that meeting.
Okay. Well, I think we've, we've kind of talked through as much as we can at this point.
Do you have anything to say? Dave?
I'm good to go.
Jan? Okay. Ordinance number twenty nine two thousand fifteen.
So, I'm sorry, I do a question. So where are we on third reading on twenty eight?
I believe we are talking about Katelyn because Joe Deemer came up with another ordinance for, for Blackburn, which is ordinance forty eight two thousand fifteen.
Forty eight two thousand fifteen might as well not be introduced because that would be a slap in Tori's face.
If you have an ordinance that replaces one, maybe we should table one definitely. It will be reviewed and eaten. Because otherwise it's instantly tabled and definite. It's better to take the action. It's either yes or no. I mean, the other one is the one that goes in place if it's better to doubt. Same for twenty nine. Cause I'm sure you're gonna say twenty nine was replaced by.
Yes, it is.
Forty whatever, forty seven, forty eight, forty seven.
So what, we're just gonna go on and do third reading on, okay, that's fine. Third reading for ordinance number twenty eight two thousand fifteen and also for ordinance twenty nine two thousand fifteen because now we're gonna have a.
We're gonna have new ordinances.
A new ordinance to support the new mop. All right? And Sylvia, that is yours as well.
Okay.
Resolution number thirty six two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, this is a resolution approving the mayor's removal of Scott Swab as director of finance and we're still holding this in first until our investigation is complete.
Do we know the status on our job?
Yes, we're anticipating next week. There was a slight delay this week because there was a, a document that Mrs. Wertz had that Mr. Demoff wanted to see and it related to the the status of POs that was provided by Andrea May. So I had asked Mrs. Wertz to forward any supporting documents that she had on any of the issues that have been investigated. And she said she would do so. I understand that arrangements have been made to deliver this tomorrow to, from her office to Mr. Demoff's office. So, and anticipate that that'll be dealt with then. And we've, we've been told the report is probably mid next week.
So do you think we should come in for a special meeting to have a meeting with Mr. Demoff to give us all the report or at the same time?
Well, I think we, I think we, I think we need to make sure that we're getting it and I think we gotta make an arrangement, maybe. Depending on if people want to do that.
I think people want to do that. I know I would like to do that. Dave, would you like to do that?
You agreed to pay them, I'm sure.
Jan?
Be happy to.
I haven't had any correspondence up to this point. I guess the question I have is, is this an act of council, this other investigation? Yes?
I think we passed an ordinance to do it.
Yes, we did pass. So what I think we're gonna do, we did ask for a purchase order and that was refused. But he is ongoing and he's completed, as I understand it, he's nearly completed this entire set of investigatory materials. So, and we're anticipating it'd be available next week. So we can certainly make an arrangement for a meeting, maybe early the following week.
And then I don't, Don, I haven't talked to Don. Did you cooperate with Mr. Demoff?
Mr. Demoff got a letter from Mr. Deemer and that was the last correspondence I had with him.
Would that be more appropriate for an executive session when you're discussing an investigation of an employee? We held the other one under executive.
We're only talking procedure.
Yeah, we're talking procedure. So, I mean, I just want to know what's going on because I, the last I knew, Don was gonna cooperate with Mr. Demoff and allow Mr. Demoff to come in. And so, and then.
I think we need an executive session.
Okay, that's fine. We can have an executive session.
I'm sure Sylvia knows the answer to that because you're talking to Mr. Demoff. I see the email, so he might know the answers of the question.
No, well, I have.
Since you've had a conversation with themself.
We could, we could do that. We can have a little short executive session and find out.
Here's my issue. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you wait until you have the report? Everything else is. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were talking.
Yeah, well, my problem is schedule. I can't do it next week because.
Gina?
I'll pick her next week. I know Dave has trials because we're trying to set a fire committee meeting.
I have two trials in two weeks. I got it after that. See you available anytime.
Is that the week of the twelfth? I didn't know you, I know you can't really set. Mr. Demoff sent all the trials though. I'm using next week.
Right, the week, yeah, the week of the eleventh. From then on, I'll be applying.
All right. Okay, so moving on to ordinance number thirty.
Sylvia, do you remember anything about the session?
Well.
Am I understanding this correctly?
Right.
So we all got to.
Yeah, we can have one.
I'm just, you never.
No, we're not having tonight.
No, he's talking about so we can ask the mayor what's going on and what happened with procedures.
Oh, oh, I didn't know.
Yes.
Well, what's going on was all that was in the meeting, emails that everyone was copying.
So there was no, okay, then.
You were all copied. The last email was from Mr. Deemer, Mr. Demoff.
Does anybody have any questions for Don that you would like to talk to him about in the executive session?
Tonight?
Yes.
No.
No, I don't.
Jan? No.
I, I have a question, but I don't know if it's appropriate to ask here or not.
Oh.
Basically, public records, the resident came up and asked about public records of the proceedings and how we got to the point of hiring Mr. Demoff. And I haven't seen or heard of any meetings or have been invited to any regarding that. So I'm trying to figure out where those records are.
Well, if you're talking.
So Mr. Demoff was hired.
Yes.
Obviously, the three of you did that.
Right, it was.
Where are the records of the proceedings for that?
The proceedings for that were in the floor.
When the decision was made to hire him.
Yes, on the floor.
There was no conversations outside of the boardroom.
He knows you made a motion, but he doesn't know about Mr. Demoff. You made the motion in October night.
Okay, but I also have.
October?
No, no, we could keep going. She's getting it. She's getting your, your request. Ordin, okay.
That was the question.
Okay, we had to move on.
Why are we skipping over?
Ordinance number thirty eight two thousand fifteen.
The reason I asked.
An emergency ordinance authorizing to adopt a revised public rec, emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to adopt a revised records policy in declaring an emergency. Sylvia, again, this is.
Well, we held it at first reading. I think we could go to second reading at this point. Everybody's had a copy of the suggested changes. So I don't see a reason why, and everybody's had a chance to review it.
I think any records request that's made should have follow procedures and this eliminates part of the procedural that I recommended as far as records requests. Just so that people are aware that this does away with procedures only for council.
It simply says that council will have access to all the records except those which are confidential information and identifiers that will be redacted by.
I just don't understand why this is necessary now and it hasn't been necessary up to this point.
Well, I think that there can be really, it's just transparency and being able to do our work as council and.
And no records requests are denied. It just takes longer to go through the records. Instead of having somebody walk into an office and go in the records room and pull something out, I don't think that's right.
Well, but that's not what, what it says. It says that there will be a request.
Well, according to Mr. Deemer, he told me that you could walk in anytime and, and demand records. Well, you know what?
That's not what it says. It, it doesn't say that in my, what it does say.
It does in his opinion.
Well, I'm sorry, his opinion must not be.
We have a work session. This I'd asked for before with Mr. Deemer so we can make sure, A, that this is valid, that it does occur. It's the public records law of the state of Ohio. You guys said there was something distributive really isn't anything new. But I've asked before. It's easiest way to do this is take it in a work session while we're discussing this.
We certainly can have a work session, but it's one, two, three, four paragraphs.
Besides your opinion.
No, I just.
That's all. That's why you requested before.
Okay, well, to me, it's fairly straightforward. Let me put it this way. The statements are very clear. All we're saying is council will have the ability to receive records and does not have to go through a procedure that involves, involving all these reviews when in fact the only thing that needs to be reviewed is that there's confidential information to redact. No medical records of that kind, as you know, there's laws that say privacy is, is premium and you don't do that. And it's according to Ohio revised code, exactly what you can redact it.
That's all the purpose was. Why are there so many pages that talk about the public?
Because.
Talks about dollars, talks about, I mean, why are you just not amending existing and highlight just the one line that says. I know, but why do I have the whole thing? And that's why I'd like Mr. Deemer to go along with this.
Well, certainly, certainly.
I want to make sure we're staying in validity of reports.
Well, why don't we have Mr. Deemer come into a regular work session and we can discuss.
Why don't you show them what I gave you tonight? What was changed in the records policy that is not in compliance with Ohio revised code? According to the Ohio sunshine laws, what they changed.
Yeah, well, there's, I don't know when it was changed.
So we're not in compliance with Ohio sunshine laws?
Not, uh.
Is that.
She's showing you, she provided me these two forms. And the difference in the two forms is that the older form did make the statement in bold right at the top, while not mandatory. If you fill out this form, it will help us provide the public records you were requesting in a more timely fashion.
And that's supposed to be in the record, I mean, anywhere?
Yes, that's true. That is a true statement. That is what they emphasize. Every time you go to the public records training, they do not have to fill in.
Well, in other words, you fill out a form, you turn it in, and your records are given.
But the city of Macedonia has changed the form.
Everybody except councils should follow that.
Show them the form that the city of Macedonia.
City of Macedonia has dropped that statement from the top of the form, which they shouldn't have done.
So if you were just an individual that came off the street, came in and said, I'd like a public record to, you know, they have you fill that out. You don't have to give your name. You don't have to do the non-identity. Because you're the one that passed it out to all your employees to give out for when so many phones.
Well, 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 you said today it was given to Sylvia. Why wasn't it given to me?
Because she's.
And tell me that we're not in compliance.
I've been telling you for years. You won't listen to me.
How are we not in compliance?
I just, Sylvia, show them the paper.
Oh, this is the reason for all those years, but you're first telling me that right now?
No, you want the emails to go with it?
Going back four years?
No.
Don, all she's talking, all she's talking about is this, this statement that should be on every, every kind of request form.
So we're in violation because we don't have this statement on it?
That's right.
That's the point.
That's right. All right, let me have it.
Josephine, you want to make us some copies?
Yeah, please do.
Here, we're gonna get some copies.
Get it off the web. So we got it off the web.
No, this used to be inside the city of Macedonia and it's been removed and replaced with this new one that they gave to all the employees. This statement here is supposed to be in there.
And we're in the state law.
Josephine, you make us all copies.
That's all. Did you find the, the web that it says?
It's, it's, it's in Ohio sunshine, uh.
That's what I asked you. Did you find out the web? That's a simple guess. That's all it is.
Yes, it is. Yes, I'm sorry, Gina, I misunderstood you. Yes, that's, it's in the manual, but it's been removed in the city of Macedonia. And they were given this in a work session or a meeting with the employees and said this, when somebody comes in for a public records, this is the new procedure you're gonna follow. And that's what the employees have been doing because that's the new procedure. So that's all I'm saying.
So they're handing the form to the, to someone requesting a record when.
Right.
Well, it, when it doesn't say what it should say, which is you don't really have to fill out this form, which they tell you because the Ohio sunshine law says that you're not required to request this in writing and you can be anonymous.
Yes, you can.
So that's basically the only issue at hand with that stuff.
Well, she's making.
It's up to the administration to make sure that the law department is doing it right. So now I'm hearing all of a sudden that the law department didn't do it right.
Well, I don't know.
So then what was passed out, what we did was wrong. So now we're all going to jail.
Well, no, 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 no. She just handed it to me.
I haven't made a public request, record request. I haven't handed out anything.
You don't have a problem getting records when you do ask for the request. It's only certain members. Only certain members though, Dave. So you're safe.
Only because Dave asked for things as are necessary, not just.
Well, how do you know that the stuff I ask is not necessary? It's not up to you. That's why it's none of your business if I ask for a record. I don't have to tell you.
I didn't say that. I said Dave doesn't ask for records requests constantly. You want me to start going and counting how many Dave has asked for?
No, because that's why it's anonymous sometimes. Cause it's really.
And we have just some people that ask constantly. So all's we're doing is working on records.
The administration is the keeper of the people's records. They're not your records. They're the people's records. Bottom line.
Bottom line is we got work to do for the city. So are we gonna pass this ordinance?
We're, we're having a work session for Jan. Jan, would you like to have it like at the end of April, like before the charter review?
Do it, Dave, till the first, next two weeks. I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
You're gonna be doing the charter review only now?
I've already committed the charter review.
I got it. I understand. I already.
And then we have Easter, so.
No, no, we, we've already had Easter.
Oh, no, not Easter. I'm looking, this calendar is like almost, okay, Nick, you can only do Thursdays, right?
I can do other days. I just reserve Thursdays for council.
Okay, what day?
First Thursdays.
Jan, you pick the day. Thanks.
I'll open all the way till end of May.
Well, May twenty seventh.
Seven more.
No, that's right.
I think that's perhaps.
You're gonna trick us.
How about we email each other and find the date that's passed? We can all check our schedules. Well, you know, I don't know my schedule. I don't have my, my schedule. I'd like to accommodate yours as well as mine, sir. Appreciate that.
So you're gonna email us on the.
I will email you first thing tomorrow. My bill dates.
My question was, you're gonna email Jan and I then also on the issue of the trap of the.
Yeah, I was actually gonna bring that up when we were done, but maybe we can put this one on the back end of that one. Is that fair? Can I hold on once?
There were few, Dan. Or put it on the front end so that she can come.
Saturday and Sunday.
No, 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 not Saturday. Sunday we can't do.
We could go up for brunch at first watch.
I still have a two dollar coupon.
Okay, so Nick, you're gonna take care of that to find out what's gonna be the appropriate.
Tomorrow.
All right, thanks, man. Ordinance number forty two thousand, we're at second reading for the work, for the public records.
I'm gonna hold it at one.
No, we're still, we'll just go to second. We're just, cause we're gonna make, I mean, we're not gonna be back for a week. Okay, ordinance number forty two thousand fifteen, Dave, Dave, this is yours. And ordinance amending the current appropriation ordinance one sixteen two thousand fourteen to appropriate funds for full-time human resource personnel administration in the city of Macedonia. I have asked, I got ahold of somebody that used to be in the human resource and I asked and if it could be full-time, part-time. And basically they said, you know, kinda, you know, yes and then no. You know, there's sometimes it's, it's a full-time position and especially during like bargaining, different situations, it becomes like, well, you need to be in full-time, so. Uh, Dee?
Well, the thing is, when Dee was doing it, we didn't have to deal with Obamacare. And when Dee was doing it, there were other issues that aren't there like we have today. Human resources is a very ticklish area that leaves. Human resources is a very ticklish area that leaves the city in very much a libelous position if we don't do it properly.
And you've been interviewing, right? Are you done interviewing and you're getting ready to hire somebody?
I have one person so far for the part-time position that I'm waiting for an answer for, from. Because that one was recommended by Betsy.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for her.
What, that she wants the job or she doesn't want to tell us?
She's applied for two positions. We are one of the two positions.
Is she waiting to see if it goes full-time or part-time or?
She was out of town. She just came back.
Okay.
This is the one you mentioned two meetings ago or one meeting ago that you had one potential.
Yes, yes, she was out of town.
That's the same person.
Yes.
And let me just ask that, I know that Obamacare is certainly an area that has added some monitoring, but I thought Betsy had kind of set up the structure for that. Or what are we doing that?
It changes all the time. It doesn't remain the same. And if you would ask Betsy, she would say, yes, full-time is better than part-time. If you get somebody that's part-time that is as skilled as Betsy, that's one thing. But you don't have that many people that want to do it part-time with her skills. She went right from this job to head of the H U D in Cuyahoga County with about a thousand employees. I mean, this is a lady that was one in a million and we were very fortunate. But when you hire a full-time, then you have more control and you can get the best you can possibly get because it's a commitment, more of a commitment to the city than part-time.
Okay, I, I, I'm thinking that.
Going to third reading?
Uh, going to third reading.
Okay.
Myself, you know, I think, you know, what do you think?
I'm ready for third reading.
Jan, do you have anything? Okay, Nick?
Let me just say this, if we do go full-time, I'm wondering if they can't handle some of the public records coordination that currently, I remember you said that this had been.
Well, most cities do that. They go to human resource and then they, they go to the department that the records are being requested from. And then she is responsible, the human resource is responsible for taking out the important stuff that is not public records and then it goes out. And if she's unsure, they go to the law department just to ask. But most of the time, it doesn't have to go to the law department because she's already, she already knows what needs to be taken out and everything's confidential, so.
Well, yeah, this, anything that would involve health records where they have to redact.
That's.
Anything that goes to law.
But it doesn't have to. If you have a good human resource, you don't need that.
No, no, you need somebody for records retention. We have a record retention person. That's one of the eighteen thousand jobs that Diana does. And she handles all records. She's responsible for all records.
She goes to the departments and asks for those records. And then they give it to her and then she sends it to the law department to take out the social security and everything else because she can't even.
And it works for years and years and years. It works as long as it's not overloaded because some records requests are so voluminous that they take.
I'm just.
Well, at any rate, uh. Your respect to that particular point, I, I was just wondering if they could take a more active role, perhaps take some of the burden off Diana if they do the coordination. Because they do have, normally somebody who is HR knowledgeable would be able to handle any redactions or things that are required.
We have people that go into the HR department constantly for paperwork. We have people that are actually in there for Betsy and with Betsy when she was here.
I know.
Constantly. So now you want to put another additional thing and we're not, we don't even know if we're going to have full-time.
Well, I.
Another job.
Well, you know, that's part of the discussion in this work session because it says the mayor will designate and identify employee administration as the records custodian coordinator. So that if we adopt this, that's your discretion from your point. It says in here that we will use the council as our records custodian for legislative.
Well, here's, here's the, here's the point I would make. Betsy was able to handle this and I agree, Betsy was certainly a very, very fine human resource director. But she was handling it part-time even with all the Obamacare stuff. But I don't have a problem if you want to go full-time because you can get a better person. I'm just suggesting.
Will you call Betsy? Why don't you just ask?
Yes, I'd be happy to, to speak to Betsy. She's a very fine person. I'm just saying, if we do agree to add, go to full-time as opposed to part-time and pay the full freight, including the healthcare and everything, perhaps we should consider locating some of the work that is needed for public records in the full, in the full-time person. That's all.
You don't, you can't call Betsy unless you call her in between here because we're going to third reading.
Okay, well, I would, I would, I'm just making that observation, Rita, would that?
All right, yeah.
It follows her recommendation that the Mastoni, city of Mastoni could absolutely use a full-time human resource person. And she's very, very concerned about many of the issues that we are still not up to par on. For instance, safety issues.
Well, I would agree we aren't and I know that she was taking initiatives for the Bureau of Workers Compensation Review.
And we're following up on that.
Right, I know you were.
But we still need someone that would handle that and believe that Betsy constantly needed help. That's another reason why we need a records clerk. But I don't think that should say records clerk. I think it just say clerk. But full-time, you're going to go to third reading, so are we going to forty-one now?
Yes, sir, we're going to ordinance number forty-one two thousand fifteen, Nick Moner, that will be yours. An ordinance establishing a part-time position of public records clerk with the mayor's office and establishing compensation thereof. We're doing third reading, right?
Yes, we're doing it.
Oh, I see, what happened?
It was forty.
Yeah. He was wondering who was reading ordinance number forty. You are, and Nick's going to do forty-one. Okay, now we're on to ordinance number forty-six two thousand fifteen. An ordinance appropriating money for additional funds needed for senior gutter. Jan, that was yours originally, so I'm going to go on and ask you to please take that one.
Thank you.
And, because I guess we need some more money in there. They, they finished off, I believe, I think this needed like four.
This finishes it off. This finishes it off.
Right, yes, okay.
But this illustrates the, the defect we have in the type of budget. Because we have to come to you for this one.
Okay, ordinance number forty-seven two thousand fifteen. An emergency ordinance replacing the existing Macedonia occupancy program adopted by the ordinance number one oh eight two thousand seven and amended by ordinance number eighty-one two thousand nine and replacing it with a new chapter one ninety-one to be known as the Macedonia occupancy and jobs creation program. And, Dave, you want to go on and take that one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And we're doing a, what, first reading?
Well, okay.
And I believe.
If we, maybe we can reach a agreement on this.
Yeah, we have, but, you know, we probably should just go to first reading on the sense that it needs, it's brand-new. You know, and the public wouldn't have had a chance to.
Ordinance number forty-eight two thousand fifteen. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to into, to enter into a Macedonia occupancy and jobs creation program agreement with Blackwater, Hubcap and Wales Cape, which will be amended to go into compliance with ordinance number forty-seven two thousand fifteen. And are we, Sylvia, we're going to first reading on it?
Yes.
We can only do first reading because you have an adopted change of.
Right.
Right.
All right, and that will be all. Unless anybody has anything that they want to say. And then Nick, you're going to get back with us on the work session, right? And I'm going to be back to back.
I do have one thing I wanted to bring up. I know that we all received the, a letter from the treasurer of the state of Ohio concerning utilizing the OhioCheckbook dot com structure. Well, at any rate, uh. I, I, I would really like to do this. I, I actually talked to the treasurer of Midland Hill Schools because we had been in a meeting the other night. And she, and she indicated that the school system is going to do this also because it increases transparency. And you'll, basically the software was built, they say that they, they would like to go to the municipal level with making that available. So what I would intend to do as finance chair is to try to contact them and let them know of our interest and then they can tell us the kind of work that might be needed in order to produce this product.
A cost to the city too.
Yes, any cost, that sort of thing. It sounds like they're trying to encourage participation, but it says at no cost to the local government. Wilson.
Yes, mayor, have you had a chance to read that because of the address of the administration? Absolutely. To make sure the data is included.
I just caution about, given the state control of our checkbook because they've taken control of our municipal funds, they've taken control of our building department and our codes. They've taken control of so much. I just caution.
Well, it's, it's simply to move data that we already have, is my understanding. You know, we have our regular financial reports.
And it's also if we have to look at cost internally, they say no cost, we can use the system, but then we have costs.
Well, I know, I agree with that. I'm not a secret.
That's what I said.
It's still going back to the same role.
Well, you know, this allow, would allow our residents to review what we're spending money on in a much more open and transparent way, which is, I think, a very good thing. I realize that since we don't know all the details, whether there would be costs internally. So I will attempt to find out there and I will write an email on this to them because I understand that's how they receive the requests. And they can then let us know and we can even talk to them, me too, and the group.
Can you copy us on that so we can see where it's at? Can you copy us all on that?
Oh, sure, absolutely. And one other thing that I wanted to mention, Mr. DiGatano offered, and I told him that I wanted to see the condition of our buildings in the service department this past week. And he, he did arrange for me to visit the buildings to see their condition with Mr. Natavang and with the, Mr. Schuman, who are the, I can see acting right now for Mr. DiGatano. And. Uh, yeah, I would like him to come on in. So one of the things I wanted to do, I'm trying to forecast a capital plan for a number of things that I would like to have ready for this fall budget. And one of the things I'd like to see is what we could do about the condition of, and maintenance of these buildings. And I wasn't sure what their truth condition was, but I will tell you, based on what I looked at, they're not. I don't know what it looks like in green, but I don't think they're up to par here. Do you have a single building or are there multiple buildings?
Several and we're looking at some different options I would speak.
I've seen this in the past that every, every department head at the budget meeting would come to the table with their five-year capital plan and things that need to be done. I don't see that we'd be doing anything different. That's what we've always done in the past. At each department would come in because you've got this building, you've got parts, you've got, you know, different entities that everyone would have to come in and talk about it. Not only just the building itself, but maybe what they use within the building. You know, upstairs, you could have, you know, somebody upstairs got a brand-new desk, brand-new carpet, brand-new whatever they, that nobody else did. Are we on an equal plane with computers, you know, with the work that they have to do? Are there any crashing? That's all capital that we need to.
Well, it is, it is. I'm not suggesting.
But it's been done by the department heads and the mayor working with the department heads to put together a five-year plan. I just say, let's revisit it, do it again.
I, that's what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting anything else other than that we work together to put a five-year plan together. I'm just saying that as finance chair, I would like to get this started fairly early because it's an extensive amount of research that needs to be done. And I would like to know what is happening because we're going to have to try to put it all together, I believe. And I, and I did attend the local government officials conference down in Columbus. And one of the seminars there was about putting together a capital plan for a minimum of five years. And I'd like to be able to move the ball forward on that. That's all.
If I may say something?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea and one of the things I think that also has to be addressed, which is going to be addressed at the safety meetings, there's a million-dollar replacement for a fire truck. And I haven't talked to either Nick or Jan, but it seemed to me, probably aren't going to have a million dollars next year to buy one or a million dollars after that. And so we probably need to be thinking of a long-term capital fund that dating to.
Yes.
I've heard about a levy, which is for the fire. So those, those are things that we all have to discuss.
Yeah, one of the things they have talked about in that local government's conference is in fact, putting together a capital plan and then utilizing, you can create a capital-only fund that you can accumulate funds in up to ten years and utilize it for various.
Do you remember, Jan, when I first came on the council, there was this really always this issue of there was a percentage of income that was supposed to go to capital, a percentage of income that was supposed to be used for other things.
I guess, but it was set by fire.
Is that, but is that, but that kind of fell apart. Is that because a particular levy expired? I just can't remember.
The two percent and how it's split today.
Yeah, it used to be we were very meticulous about, because there was a certain.
Is this not a law? It's in our tax code.
But we, but we used to always, that always used to be an issue and then all of a sudden, nobody seems to pay any attention to it anymore. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what, how did that happen?
It's not for me to say, but you already have allocations in your tax code of how much money should be going to capital and it's in there.
All right, it's still there. Just, I, nobody's, nobody's brought that as an issue for the last four years and I was kind of curious. Okay, thank you.
So if we don't, this should, or it has to?
It has to.
It has to.
I don't know if we have or we haven't. I just know it used to be a big issue, but that was back when things were a lot cooler than they were now.
I remember when Chief Golden would come in with all these cars and say, we've got to see if we have it from the safety or the safety.
Okay.
So that's part of, that was done.
We need to, we need to make sure we're doing that right.
Just asking a question out there. I think we started with you, but I've thought about this for a while. We have basically three locations right now for the service department. Would it even be feasible if we were to sell it, which are five locations? Where we sold a location and took those funds to maybe put it out, pay more, begin to build a facility to accommodate it all in one area?
That's what the system.
Most, most services, all of them, all your conditions, by the building.
Right.
And even your certain red, step, that's it. Keep it under control. Everybody should be in that building. Except any of your partners. We, we don't. Each building has a major problem.
Put one location that we currently have, give up and potentially put everything on another location and build.
Lose their size, I think.
There was a six.
I guess acreage is what I'm getting at. So there's not, there's not enough acreage because they're not available to be grown to put everything in one place.
Well, at nine thousand, you own the property now in South of it, about nine thousand, you own the property.
Nine thousand.
No, nine thousand dollars.
We should have written on that because that property is right opposite the residential zoning. We always have these problems about where we have industry which your service department would have mountains of dirt and all those things to storage. And you're right across from residential. So why not sell that property to residential? And there are chances that we can get our hands on some other properties that hasn't played out yet.
We have property that might be available.
Well, we have property that might be available to us, but it's complicated and we're waiting to see how that works out.
I mean, generally, you would start with an hearing to develop a plan. Ideas to look at that. I mean, once the council will be open to having a conversation with G P D about that.
That was the point I was trying to make. That was the point I was trying to make. That was, that was the point of going out and looking.
Well, they, what the whole five-year plan is to put together from every department.
They've done it in, uh, their work high school, uh, six seats. There, uh, they've got quite a few facilities to, yeah, I have one, and at the time, I think it was almost ten years ago, until I came to twelve.
I think we could, we can look at alternatives, and one of them might be nine thousand Valley View. I, I know what he's talking about, there's quite a bit of property. I think what the mayor is saying is true, we'd have to be careful how we would configure the property so that it shouldn't become an issue in terms of the appearance. And we certainly, the building that's in front of this, uh, city hall on Valley View there, the, that we're currently using, looks to be in extremely bad shape, and it looks like it almost should be torn down.
If the nine thousand Valley View, uh, and Valley View, you literally walk up to one of those, it's run sound, it was built long ago.
And now it's even worse, yes.
Now it's worse.
That's what they said to me, that it would have had a lot of problems. I looked at it, apparently the mechanics are over there.
It's the bloody system.
Well, I think it's not just a question of being in one building, it's an improved building because what they're in right now is not good, it's very, very unhealthy, in my opinion.
Before we adjourn, like people were getting ready to, about a month, maybe two months ago, Sagamore, I think it was a Sag, or Northville, came, Prestue came to us about, uh, their opposition to legislation. We had had some, we'd passed some discussion, and everybody seemed to agree that we would, one, like to maybe write letters. That seems to have fallen by the way, I don't know.
Were you in the legislation?
We did ask...
We also talked about some letters and...
I, I sent that, like, a chunk of the resolution, like, I sent that letter to probably fifteen, like, officials throughout the state.
Why meant to us? We were gonna sign.
Oh.
Well, it's interesting because actually, the House has passed, we totally revised bill, which eliminates all of the, the areas. Now, whether it's gonna get through the Senate, but they're, yeah, but it's pretty close to, the House has already made a, a decision that they're, they passed a bunch of...
Do, do you think it's worth us, Josephine, turning on the machine, write the letters, and we can send them to the Senate or not? That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, okay, uh, I think we should support the House bill on the Senate, that's what I think.
Pranay Rishi.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
She said she's already done the letters. Well, we did, but we were all gonna do, send the letters because...
But now we can break a motion to support the House.
You know, I, when I worked with the House, I think, bigger impact was letters. They paid a lot of attention to the mailbag, it kept flying in.
I agree with you.
They just letters they had for...
Well, I know.
Right, but, you know, also, uh, this will date me, but it's like the seventies, probably, I don't even remember. The bargaining in the seventies, they were just postcards, they were all blue, and the other one, I forget what that was, they were all yellow. It didn't really matter.
Well, Senator Rose is our senator, so...
All right, thanks.